I'd like to call the July 14th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Education to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Cunn?
Here.
Dr. Beeter?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, community comment. Participants under this agenda must limit their statements to three minutes, with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item due to board policy, administrative rules, 8300. Anybody like to make a community comment?
My name is Karen Hertie. It's K E I N Hertie, H A R T J E. My address is 7842 West Imperial Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132. Hello, members. It's nice to see most of your faces. I didn't see them last year, so this is very good to see your faces. This is a very difficult subject to bring up as I still have a student in Franklin School District. The reason why this is difficult is I know there's also been retribution against times where we bring things up forward to either administration or the school board. It is my intent not to rehash the events that took place last November of 2020. My intent is to ensure that the situation is not allowed to occur again in Franklin where there is intentional misleading of the school board, parents, and community. I request reflection by the school board members of these events that occurred last November. I'm going to read a couple of school board policies just for those who are new. Per the school board policy in 4750, the superintendent's overall responsibility is to coordinate, supervise, under the policies of the board and creation, operation of environment, which is to, in which students learn most effectively. Subsequently, in the same policy, the school board then evaluates a superintendent. In the upcoming evaluation for a superintendent, I'm requesting the school board take into consideration the violation of Title IX as directed by either the superintendent, Dr. Judy Miller, or their athletic director and TIFTY's director, Dr. Jordan Heine. This is found on the website, but I will read it according to our own Franklin Public School website entitled Title IX Policy and Reporting. As mandated by the current provisions of Title IX in the Education Amendments of 1972, so we're in 40, almost 40 years, almost 50 years, sorry. Under the regulations set forth in the chapter by the code, the district does not unlawfully discriminate on the basis of sex of any education program activity that the school district operates. Title IX's requirement is to not discriminate in any education program or activity extend to, but is not limited to, district students, certain admission processes, district employment inquiries regarding Title IX and federal Title IX regulations applied to the district. Further defined in the school board policy of 5010. So in 5010, discrimination is defined by our school board as the action or policy, including bias stereotyping, student harassment, that is detrimental to a person, group of persons, and differences or distinguishes against similarly situated persons. This is where it comes in. Discriminants against, sorry, distinguishes against similarly situated persons that limits or denies a person or group, person opportunities. Also, on part of a protected characteristic, being a professor at UW Milwaukee, this characteristic that is protected is being a student athlete. Facts from this past fall, on November 7th, WIA released the playoff bracket for football, which included the final four top three teams in the state. Miss Kigo, number one, Franklin, number two, Menominee Falls, number three, Arrowhead, number four. Very short time following the release, a forfeit was updated on the WIA 2020 Boys Football Sports Tournament, Division One. At that time of the forfeit, there were no players testing positive for SARS-CoV-2, otherwise known as coronavirus. Subsequently, at the time of the Division One Tournament Bracket release and subsequent forfeit, the swim team was allowed to continue their WIA tournament. Additionally, later that evening, the play continued with touching my ad because we've reviewed it. Upon reaching out to the superintendent, athletic director, school board, and health commissioner, there was no response regarding my questions regarding the weekend actions that were taken. To this date, no one has taken ownership of regarding forfeiting football, while at the same time allowing other sports and activities to can subsequently continue, identifying discrimination against male athletes. What was said over that weekend to another parent by the Athletics and Activities Director, Mr. Heine, is that WIA would not allow the team to reenter. It's also my understanding, this was stated to the school board by our superintendent, Dr. Mueller. On Monday, November 9th, upon personally speaking myself to the football director for WIA, it was identified indeed that if Franklin were to reverse the forfeit, WIA would allow our team to reenter the state Division One tournament. On Monday, November 9th, in speaking to Mayor Olson, by myself, it was identified that our health commissioner could not have even been involved in this decision because she was out of town. This was subsequently verified by the health commissioner that Monday night, for which she indeed did not make any of the decision to forfeit the sport and allow other sports and activities to continue. This identifies that either Mr. Jordan Heine or Dr. Judy Miller intentionally misled the school board and parents regarding events that were taking place and subsequently violating Title IX. I understand that my next step according to the policies that are available at Franklin is to reach out to our Franklin School District Title IX coordinators and file a complaint to pursue the violation. Again, my intent is not to rehash the events that took place in November 2020. My intent is to ensure that the situation is never allowed again to occur in Franklin where there's intentional misleading of the school board, parents, and community. It is also my intent to ensure that no student ever again is discriminated against because of gender or what they play in sports. A member of the school board was allowed to see their children perform the last showing of their school play because it was said by our Athletic and Activities Director, quote, "They worked hard and they deserved it." That was his quote in an email. Is that not the same for all children involved in all activities and athletics, or do we single up football? All of our students and students across the board throughout all of our schools are elite athletes. They're elite in their activities. They're elite in everything they do. We have a great debate team from what I've saw because I've had to research it. And Title IX is specifically there to protect all of our children. I'm truly grateful for the hard work it took to allow our seniors who have an actual graduation last month. However, if you as a superintendent and school board have done, what you as our superintendent and school board have done to our children is truly about the pandemic that we are proceeding through and not about having power. I would humbly request reflection regarding the handshake of almost every student at graduation by Mr. Volo and Dr. Mueller without any hand sanitation. Thank you for reading. And I know I'm not on the agenda, so I don't expect any comments.
Good evening. Michelle Winkie, 3676 West Central Avenue, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132. Last month, there were two students representing the free group. After a meeting, they approached me, backtracking on what they promoted on the 519 Saber Roar. I had told them I'm not in favor of students creating curriculum because I don't, I'm not in favor of that, but they said that's not what their intention was. It was to just bring diversity into the curriculum here and there. Did not, I'll just go with they quoted, but on the Saber Roar, they said that they wanted to create a list of five POC figures for each general school subject, general school subject, which you know all kids at FHS will take so that we can implement them into the curriculum without having to do too much move around. This move around, I don't know what that is. I emailed this group, and I guess I'm not familiar with it, but they don't even have a Franklin School District email. It is a Gmail account. So I'm looking to find out who is the actual adult behind this group. Because I don't want to be corresponding with some minors because they're children. I'm an adult. So I do, I do need that. I will email you guys if that's some information you can give me because there's no accountability to this group, if there is not a Franklin Public School email. There's no oversight. Gmail is a public thing. So I have a few concerns with this. Why is a student group implementing into the curriculum, a general curriculum, not just a club or a core class or a class of some subject or whatever, but the general curriculum? And like I said, there's no adult leader that I can find out. And then they also plan to have a list of people by the end of the school year. And I had asked them for that list of people so you could see, because I'd like to know what they, who are these people, because I like to learn. The email's been ignored. I think I sent it after the second meeting or that June meeting, so it's been about a month. Another thing with the oversight of these students now, especially in the high school, I had a problem with the Saber Roar, again on 519, with the pro-vaccination. If you want to go back to normal, get your vaccine. As we've come across now, we are seeing a lot of side effects with young teenagers, especially our male teenagers, getting the myocarditis, heart inflammation. And I had emailed you guys about this. I got like a general email back, and then I was sent to the high school principal. He called me, so that was great. We talked about a few things, and he just said, now, he told me this was a student-run video production thing that student-led, student-run. And he said that ultimately, he's responsible for it, but he said, I guess that would have went further than I would have liked. So again, if there's some oversight by an adult here on these groups, but yet it's still going further than these adults would like, what's going to happen with this free group? Because I saw what happened with this pro-vaccine thing. I guess, I mean, and last month too, I also said that I'd like to know about the teachers giving us more detailed syllabuses, not just a general, like, oh, we're going to learn about, you know, the first Thanksgiving or something general. Like, what websites are they using? What concepts? What videos are they using? Because like I said, I didn't want my children watching CNN. We don't watch the news at home. I don't want them watching it at school. Is there anything that you guys are going to be proposing to teachers that they need to make the classroom transparent to us parents? Because I think more and more now, parents are wanting to know what's going on in these classrooms. And I want to know what my children are being exposed to daily. And, I mean, we just made the news again, Wisconsin, with that Sora. I don't even know what it is, an online library or something like that. Third graders are allowed to access, I guess they called it sexually explicit material. I don't know what it was. I didn't look too much into it. I don't have access to Sora. So that's, I mean, what my concerns are, is the transparency, the oversight of these children's clubs, groups, promotion things, what are they doing? Who are the adults behind them? And why are the adults allowing things to be presented out there with no, I guess, oversight then? I guess, you know, let's see, what else do I have on here? And then, you know, two meetings ago, you guys did talk about communication. And I believe it was Linda who said she felt like she was being screamed at. We're not here to scream at you. We're here because we love our kids. And I'm sorry that you felt that way, and maybe you, maybe you were being screamed at. I don't think I'm screaming at you guys, but I love my kids so much that I'm willing to come up here and do this public speaking stuff, which I hate so very much because I'm concerned that our school districts, school districts in general, are becoming a political organization that is just allowing these kids to think one way, and that way is to hate America. And like last time I said, we need to approach our kids and let them know that this is the greatest country on the planet. Look what's happening in Cuba right now. People are waving the American flag for freedom. Freedom, that's what we are. We are a place of immigrants who love this country, who love their freedoms, and it's sad to see these kids walking away from these school districts thinking America is this horrible place on earth. Because it is not. And I guess that's all I have. But yeah, with the communication thing, though, I would love to have a two-way communication with you guys. I don't know how that works. How would that work? I mean, does it have to be off the record? Is there something where you guys have an open, hey, we can converse, off-the-record type of thing? I don't even know how that works. Do you guys know how that works? But you guys will be getting an email, and if it's off the record, then I'm going to give you my phone call because then it's off the record. And I'd love to talk to anyone who wants to talk to me on what your desires are for the school board and for our students. Because right now, all I get is a blank stares, and that's all I'm getting. And so I just think it's, I'm talking to a brick wall that you guys, I'm done talking, and then you guys just move on with life. And unless it really affects you, you don't have anything to say. So that's all I have to say, I guess. So have a great evening. I have to go pick up my kids, but we'll be back.
Good evening. You're gaining US lango here again. 3102 West Southland Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132. I'm here today to touch upon like same topics because I've read the newsletter that came out today and didn't see any changes that I would personally like to see. And I believe a lot of other parents would like to see that, too. Also, lately, I have been noticing messages from parents who are worried and even mad by the schools not requiring and mandating the masks for the elementary school kids. Parents mentioning in the comments that they contacted the school board multiple times, don't get the replies. I know there are very passionate parents on both sides of the question. And in their opinion, kids have to be made to wear masks again until a vaccine is available. However, it is known that the vaccines are still in trial stages until 2022, 2023. And even when they are available to younger group of kids, many parents will choose not to experiment on their kids and give the shot to them until the vaccines are FDA-approved, if it ever even happens. And some parents will choose to never give it to them, to their children ever, even if they are approved. So I think the problem with that, and I see there is like a growing tension between the parents communicating, it's not a secret, like people talk about that on Facebook, right? So, and the problem lays in the lack of information that is provided to parents, intentionally or not. Thus, the solution I see to the arguments about the masks and vaccines is to inform parents about the emergency use authorization nature of the masks and vaccines and the laws that give any person the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. Such knowledge will give people the understanding on the freedom of choice and understanding that such choices should be respected, and there is no place for blaming or being mad at people who choose differently. Also, it would be extremely helpful to have set criteria or metrics, as you call them, released to the parents based on which the school district is going to determine shifting to virtual learning if necessary, like it is stated in the newsletter. And once again, so those criteria were never released and metrics. So parents are just informed about the decision that is basically made backstage. We've never heard the discussion. The school board never voted on the mask question, quarantine question. Like, we've never heard that. Like, it didn't happen in front of our eyes. Another question, once again, I mentioned it last time, and I'm going to touch upon it this time as well. The contact tracing to support the Franklin Health Department in quarantining students who have not been vaccinated. Same question that I have. How are you going to know who is vaccinated or not? If a student is sent into quarantine, it makes everybody aware the student is not vaccinated. So this is basically the release of medical information to the public. I know we have to submit the form, and this is basically for the Health Department to know like about general vaccines, but still there are waivers that parents sign. But doesn't, shouldn't this information stay private and prevent anybody else about like learning the vaccination status of the students? Another question that quarantining students who have not been vaccinated arises is just treating students who are not vaccinated differently. How long is it going to be? Like, we don't have a state of emergency. We don't have like any special condition in the state, county, or city. So where is that endpoint when we're going to stop quarantining the kids? Parents are not informed about that. And like sending my kids back into school this year, like, I'm at a loss. What's going to happen? Are they going to be on and off, on and off, if somebody's got sniffles and cough? And like, are my kids going to be sent back to home like for quarantining and not even being sick? So like, I'm in the dark about that question. I would like to hear the discussion about that or get some more detailed information about that. And like I said, the quarantines, like I brought it up last time, the quarantines didn't prove to be very reasonable based on your own data. Like, only 1.7% turned to be positive without proof they actually caught it at schools. So it doesn't, still doesn't feel like freedom. We can go based on feelings of opinions, but it would be great to have like certain set metrics so everybody is aware of that. That will help to avoid all those quarrels and like going into like hostile environment, like starting the schools when parents are fighting each other for the masks, vaccines, and who, and like very opinionated people who think and tell others what to do. There are laws regulating the use of emergency authorized products, and it would be great to release them to the public because I know a lot of people are not aware. Also, I know that Wisconsin United for Freedom recently sent out this letter to all the school districts. I hope you received it and had a chance to review. If not, I hope you will have a chance to review, which states that the immunization requirement is waived if the student or an adult or student parent, guardian, or legal custodian submits a written statement to the school childcare, childcare center, or nursery school objecting to the immunization for reasons of health, religion, personal conviction. At the time any school childcare center or nursery school notifies a student, parent, guardian, or legal custodian of the immunization requirements, it shall inform the person in writing of the person's right to a waiver under this subcession. Over like years of time, like, and I was like that myself, I always took it as the vaccines are required to attend the school, and this is not true. This is like a major misconception that is present in the public. Like, kids don't have to be immunized to go to school. This is the right which is covered, and this is Wisconsin Statute 252.04. And they do provide the information about emergency use authorization. This is the information that I've been talking about. Release it to the parents so parents understand that there is an option to accept or refuse administration of the product, and they don't, do not attack other parents for making a different choice not to vaccinate, not to wear a mask. And this actually pertains not, this applies not only to children but to adults, too. So I know this is like not my thing to discuss with the school board and with superintendent as for like staff at schools, but all these rules are the same. The laws are the same for children, for adults, and making staff wear masks who choose not to vaccinate is not fair. So, and the FDA, the statement of the FDA website is, this is the last thing I'd like to mention. FDA believes that the terms and conditions of an emergency use authorization issued under Section 564 preempt state or local law, both legislative requirements and common law duties that impose different or additional requirements on the medical product for which the emergency use authorization was issued in the context of the emergency declared under Section 564. In an emergency, it is critical that the conditions that are part of the emergency use authorization or an order or waiver issued pursuant to Section 564A, those that FDA has determined to be necessary or appropriate to protect the public health, be strictly followed, and that no additional conditions be imposed. So you cannot condition, if you do this, you wear a mask. If you don't do the vaccine, you have to wear. This is not according to the law. Please take it into the consideration and make adjustments so we do not run into like more problems regarding the law and aggressiveness of the people towards each other. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Lindsay Hayes again. I want to just touch on three things tonight. The first one is the mask again. I appreciate the communication today as far as knowing what's happening for fall, tentatively. But I still am leery that this decision could be overturned in the fall with this supposed new variant out, Delta, which is the news, which we don't watch either, but people are fearful of on Facebook, you know, attacking supposedly children more, which I don't believe that is true. But I do fear that the school districts will take this as an opportunity once again to assume medical control of our children in a way that many of us parents do not see fit. So us parents are begging you to just please keep the mask-wearing optional. And I was really happy to see that today in the communication, but that it stays that way regardless of what happens, regardless of what the news tells us is happening. But we do all understand this is at our children's own risk, and we all agree that wearing a mask is a way bigger risk than not wearing a mask. So I really don't want to continue with the email, make phone calls, and, you know, so-called buck the system anymore in this, in this next school year. I don't want to be doing this either. But if the decision is overturned back to mask-wearing, I'm going to have to kick, fight, and scream every day again about all this. I don't want to do that. Please, just keep both sides happy. People who want to wear masks, children can, some don't have to. Please just keep it optional so that every parent can be, you know, satisfied. And like Michelle said about, or not Michelle, our last speaker said about people and parents as causing division. It is, and it shouldn't have to be this way because if someone wears the mask, it should be okay for them to do it, and if others don't, it should be okay. And if their child is wearing a mask, their child is, you know, supposedly protected. And if they're really concerned, maybe take the virtual option. But I just don't think that one group should be able to make the decision for both sides and say, well, this is how it's going to be. Because we're fine with, they want to do masks, but just keep it, please, bad choice. Like I said, I don't want to pull my child. I've checked into the private schooling, homeschooling, and I know that would take money out of the district's pocket. I would love my children to do Franklin. I would love that. But there are things that are questionable with the direction things are going. So please consider that for fall with this whole mask business. My second topic is again, critical race theory. I have learned that many of the teachers from the union, National Education Association, signed a petition to teach critical race theory, even if it ends up being banned or in the process of being banned in some states. After looking up this list to see if there are any Franklin teachers on there, so saying that they would teach it regardless of, even if they weren't supposed to, it was pulled down by the NEA probably to protect these, you know, woke teachers. And I know the NEA are the ones pushing this agenda, so I did a little more digging to see if there was a relationship between the NEA and our Franklin teachers. And after doing my research, what it looked like is Franklin teachers are in Region Seven of the NEA, meaning they are a part of this particular union that is pushing for the critical race theory, and that many of these adults who are influencing our children's lives may be pushing their own ideas of what they feel is right instead of sticking to the curriculum and staying politically neutral. So like I said last time, please, these teachers need to leave certain topics up to us parents to teach our own children. There are topics that have no business in a classroom. I do not pay high taxes in Franklin and my child brainwashed by communist propaganda. And I don't seem to understand the lean to the far left these days when education should just take a middle ground and not lean right or left. Or at least, like Michelle said, exposure to both sides. At least give them an option, give them both sides. My third subject is the vaccine. And it is fine if people in the community would like to be vaccinated. Everybody has to do what makes them feel safe and secure. But please, let's not go down this road where we're forcing this upon our children in the future in order to attend school or to attend mask-free. I know this has not been a discussion quite, we're not quite there, but I fear that this is where we're headed. I know there has been a lot of talk about the vaccine in previous meetings from concerned parents and community members. If adults feel comfortable taking that risk with this experimental shot, they do have the right to do so. But please don't put parents in a position where we're being told our child needs to get an unapproved shot in order to walk through the school doors. Because I can tell you right now, none of us parents will do that. Once again, we're back to dollar signs being lost for the district of Franklin. Because if parents who believe that vaccine, so if parents who believe in that vaccine want to take that route with their children, nobody's stopping them, but please let us have our God-given freedom to make that choice for our own families without consequence, as this is still America, home of the free. So in other words, we can do better, Franklin. Please, for all of you on the board with children, please consider these three serious situations that I brought to your attention again tonight. I thank you for your time and your attention to these matters. I have been praying for each and every one of you. I know you have difficult decisions and lots of pressure on your shoulders. Thank you in advance, and God bless.
Hello. Cheryl Turzis, 3501 West Thorncrest Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132. I too just want to touch on the three topics that my daughter just touched on. I too just want to touch on the three topics that my daughter just touched on, because they're very important to my heart as well. The first one is masking our kids. The more I do research, the more I hear it's not a good thing. So to keep it optional would be great for those parents, and I see them in the store, and that's fine, they're scared. These little babies are being masked where they can't even breathe, and they're breathing in carbon monoxide. I watch the narrative of the left and the White House, and what they want to do is keep us in fear and control, and they have done a beautiful job. We are always told to follow the science, but the people that are sane do the exact opposite. They're not following the science. They're seen on photographs without masks, and they're doing their social events while they're keeping their little flock and sheep covered. It is more harmful to mask up kids than to not. A study released said children with masks are exposed to carbon dioxide three times than healthy levels. Masks cause headaches, anxiety, fear, and are just plain gross and unhealthy as the kids fidget with them all day. My second point of concern is the vaccine. This is a private matter, and none of the school's business. They should not be promoting it to students. The family decides what is best for their child. Schools are overstepping their boundaries, as is the country, going door to door soliciting a vaccine. As far as I know, we have no doctors or scientists on the Franklin staff. Correct me if I'm wrong. The shot is not a vaccine. It is not FDA approved. It is an emergency experimental drug. Key word, experimental. So in theory, we are the guinea pigs. And I'm seeing on the news too, all the adverse effects that it's having on people. They're having their loved ones in the hospital with blood clots, young kids are getting heart problems. It's like this should be a family matter, personal. My last point is construct critical race theory. No school should be teaching this lie. It is divisive, destructive, and dangerous. We are teaching our children to hate. Kids are colorblind. They don't see color. We are putting labels on kids. We are letting them, telling them they are oppressed and victims. This is an agenda to divide. It's indoctrination, and the agenda is to create Marxist social justice warriors, to hate our country and its history, to create a culture of leftism and equity. Equity is poison. We should not be judging people by color of their skin, but who they are and their character. There is one race, the human race. Color is irrelevant. Critical race theory is not advancing the beautiful dream of Martin Luther King. Equity is not about equality of opportunity. It is about equal outcomes, which is fundamental to a Marxist political ideology. Why on earth would we put this in our kids' curriculum? The school's job is to teach subjects, not to push hate or their political opinions. We just celebrated the Fourth of July, and I for one held my flag proudly, thanking God I live in the greatest country in the world where freedom, as of now, still reigns. For those who don't feel that way, don't change my country, move. If we are such a bad country, why aren't people standing on that southern border waving them on and telling them not to come? God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Benay Pandey, 9848 West Prairie Grassway, Franklin, Wisconsin. Just wanted to correct my friend for one second. There are two races, two races, everybody else, and the American race. What I mean by that is people in America came here, they were either rejects, they were brought here, they chose to come to a new place for opportunities. That's what this place is. We're all descendants of that race, all of us. We're different than the rest of the world. Don't forget that, teach that. This is the city of Franklin. You need to do that. There's the points my friends just said. I have nothing else to add, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else care to comment?
Lori Pandey, 9848 West Prairie Grassway, Franklin. My only concern is what somebody mentioned, the teachers' unions teaching critical race theory, and that this is going to be allowed by the teachers' unions. This is, this is what they're pushing for, and this is what the teachers are going to do. So if they want to work and be a part of the union, this is what they must do, right? To keep your job, this is what you're going to do. So maybe they don't like it, but I feel like they're going to follow along. They may agree with it, I just don't know. That's my buddy, thanks. And I guess the problem with that is our kids are suffering. The kids are the ones that are forced to listen to this, which is not accurate. They're saying the US was founded in 1619. Like, I don't know where this is coming from. Things that aren't even true. What is the purpose of the Civil War? It just doesn't even make any sense that we're trying to push slavery, and that was why it was being fought. Like, these things aren't even accurate. So they're teaching things that aren't true. If they can just stick to the actual history, this would be appreciated. But I guess what I'm wondering is if these teachers are teaching critical race theory, and that's what they're supposed to do, how are we going to stop this? How are we even going to know what's happening? It's not like somebody's in the classroom with these teachers kind of watching over what are they saying, what are they doing? We don't know. You know, do we need cameras in schools? That's another option I've seen of, kind of like in a daycare. Some of these daycares, you can watch what is happening with your child. Not that I've actually experienced this, but is that the point we need to come to of, that these cameras need to be in place? Parents want to hear what was going on in the classroom, know what is being taught to their kids? Maybe that's the option we need. I don't know. It seems kind of far-fetched, but I don't know how we're going to know what's truly being taught in this classroom, and how do we stop this? I don't know that this is the agenda of anybody on this board or that you guys are pushing this, but I feel like it's maybe coming in from another angle that you aren't even aware of. So if you can research this, find out what's going on, what is being taught, I don't know what it takes, but, you know, visits that are unannounced, I don't know if that would help either, because then people are kind of, they know they're on watch, they're maybe not going to say what they truly feel. So I think it's a big problem, and people need to come up with some solutions of how do we best do this and stop it. This is America.
Anybody else care to comment? All right, item five, consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda. For the board members, there is an updated, an updated list of personnel update. There was a change as of 3:00 this afternoon, so that is the, that is the personnel update that will be, that we will be voting on. So I'd like to, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Just a quick question. What changed, right? What happened?
So there was a individual who was hired to teach, I believe, literacy at the middle school who had changed their mind. So that person was removed from the agenda.
So was removal.
Removed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements, any announcements by school board members?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know, let the community know, that school board will be at the Franklin National Night Out, which is Monday, August 2nd, if you, anybody wants to join us. I hope that the community will come out to the National Night Out. It's over at the library on Monday night, August 2nd.
And I just wanted to make a quick announcement. I made a friend through the Franklin Historical Society who shared the obituary of a woman who recently died. I didn't know her personally. Her name was Mildred Perry, Millie Perry. She was a Franklin resident since 1957. She died at age 103 quarters, and she served on the Franklin School Board for 19 years. She was the first woman ever to serve on the Franklin School Board, and I'll read from her obituary. It says that she served on the Franklin School Board for 19 years, during which time she was an early and dedicated advocate for quality of girls' athletics and the fair treatment of female faculty. And it goes on to list a number of other remarkable accomplishments. So I never had the chance to meet this woman, but she sounds like she was amazing, and I just think it's worth noting her passing. And I'll pass her obituary if anyone wanted to glance at it.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, item seven, school board calendar. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, August 25th. Note the time, it's at the ECC and it's at 5:30. Annual meeting is Wednesday, August 25th at the ECC at 6:00. And regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, September 8th, Education and Community Center, 6:00 PM. District Administrator update, Dr. Miller.
Good evening. I'd just like to report that our summer school program's going very well. We have 295 children enrolled in elementary, 134 at the middle, and 111 at the high school. This summer, we're providing more opportunities for enrichment at the middle school, and the students have really embraced those classes. Just some examples, there are the classes. We have outdoor science, Fit for Life, and backyard games. So I've had a chance to walk across the street and see the kids, and they're, they're really having a great time. Also this year, we're adding a Franklin High School Transition Program for our incoming ninth graders. That'll occur on August 16th and 17th, and we're also going to continue with our Forest Park Middle School Transition Program for sixth graders, and that's on August 26th and 27th. We're also adding a week-long advanced placement summer academy for interested high school students who signed up for what we call AP class in the incoming school year. It focuses on techniques for success in AP classes, and then provides our students time to start their summer homework. Today, we sent out our first communication regarding our instructional program next year and our virtual learning options. We're asking our families to let us know if they'll be selecting virtual instruction for their children who have a serious medical concern or are ages five through 11. This data will be used to set up our virtual learning program with our third-party vendor. We continue to convey that we're following CDC guidelines and recommending that students who are not vaccinated wear masks, but we are not requiring them. So that concludes my report tonight.
Do you offer the transition courses to students who are transferring into the schools as well, in addition to rising ninth graders, for example?
You know, I have Mr. Volo here and Mrs. Sunstrom, who work closely with those programs, and they're nodding their heads, so I just don't want to misinform you. Okay, they are invited to do so. Okay.
And what kind of participation do we get? It's not required, obviously. Okay, so a third of the class.
Seems like anecdotally, the middle school is, well over half, attend the transitional course, yeah.
And who teaches that?
We have some staff that we employ to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It also seems as if the ninth grade used to have a day to themselves at the beginning of, of the year. I don't know if that's going to change, and I'm only asking because I see you here, Mr. Volo.
If you recall, this past year, we had like three or four days of transition for students. So we're working on what a good transition would look like for our students. So it certainly won't be that number of days, but soon I'll be announcing what those transition days will look like. It may be that we use two days and kind of split the kids into two groups. The teachers really enjoyed those transition days because it really gave them an opportunity to get to know the kids a little better without all of them being there on that first day. So more to come on that, but it's a great question, and we'll get that out to families soon.
The AP Technique course, the students who are taking AP Technique, is it for all the students, for all the APs, and is the information sent to the parents for that? And when is the information sent? And the students who are not, didn't attend the AP Technique course for any homework, are we sending an email to all the parents who are taking the, and the students that, hey, you haven't taken the AP Technique course, but this is what you can prepare for the AP courses? Are we sending some kind of an email?
So I'd say so. If a teacher is communicating for students to even say, you're in my course, here's people to know, or here's work to do over summer to get yourself engaged in fall, really depends on the course and the teacher. You know, if we have a student transfer in and they register on August 30th, they're going to be okay. And if we have students who are able to do some work, you know, between June and August or September 1st, they'll also be okay. So teachers kind of plan for both, like communicate, given the students they know they have, and then, you know, like, okay, just the ones we don't, get it ready, same with them.
Thank you.
Is that going to change at all? Because I know we had pre-AP biology, and now we have pre-AP chemistry. I mean, everybody is taking AP classes now. I mean, it's required, right? So I don't.
The AP is a little bit different than the AP, but our goal is to have everybody go through that and it's ready. So hopefully over a couple of years, we can see that broken for them. It's exciting for the pre-AP classes, they all have some homework.
Oh, I see. Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say that I was pleased to see in the plan for the fall, the option for students to be able to rejoin their homeschool's classroom if they were studying virtually until such time as their parents felt comfortable sending them back to school. I think that is nice to know they'll always have a spot at their homeschool.
Absolutely.
I appreciated that.
All right, item nine, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Annual academic standards adoptions. It's an action item. Dr. Miller, please.
So Dr. Reuter was unable to attend, so I have invited Anita Sunstrom, so I need if you'd like to come to the table. She works in the Instruction Department and provides the leadership for our curriculum reviews in the district, works very closely with teachers on that work. So she's here to present that standards adoption to you this evening. So thank you for being here, Anita.
Oh, thanks for having me. I know you got from Dr. Reuter the annual standards adoption kind of memo that outlined these standards. So we tried to put in there all the standards that our students have K-12, and we also included the essential elements that our students who have the most significant disabilities engage in when they're engaging with the DLM toward that alternate achievement. So you saw in the list the standards that all the students have access to. These are benchmarked, they're rigorous, set high expectations for our students' learning. We definitely, like Dr. Miller said, work with teachers and admin through our curriculum review cycle to develop these experiences that really exceed these standards for our students as they're working with this. So I am here in Dr. Reuter's place and hoping if you have questions that I can answer them.
I'd sent a question to Dr. Reuter, which he answered very completely, but I think a repeat of it would be beneficial for everyone, just sort of explaining how we go from taking sort of very well-crafted, obviously very well-sourced, multiple experts involved in creating these standards, how we go from that to sort of tailoring them to our needs specifically here at Franklin. Like, how do we go from standards to curriculum to goals and objectives to whatever order?
You're right, there is a lot of research done into all the standard sets. We do a stakeholder team for each of these subject areas, and the review cycle will involve teachers across the grade bands, it will involve admin, obviously our instructional team, and we spend time. It will involve admin, obviously our instructional team, and we spend time prioritizing the standards because um they will be very comprehensive and within a given school year. Um, we look at like, what is that vertical flow going to look like from K-12 or 612, depending on the standards? Um, and then work through, how does this, like, what are the specific goals for the kids? What are the daily goal, or the unit goals, and work with teams and constantly review to see how we're meeting those?
And so obviously, all of these um standards are linked in our, in our agenda here. When you do go to the next level of um developing, what would be your next level down? Goals and objectives or curricula? I don't even know. One or the other. They're sort of the same.
Yeah, the standards identify, we prioritize them, then those are our goals. So we start with that. And we look at like, how will students show evidence of reaching those goals? And then we start building, what could a unit look like?
And those are all publicly available as well on the district website?
Right. We have all this, everything you have here is linked on our Teaching and Learning page.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the adoption of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Sorry, easy for everybody else to say, annual academic standards.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion?
They really aren't any changes, right?
Correct.
All right, uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, Budget Draft One Approval. Uh, Mr. Millsor, please.
Uh, we're at that time where we, we have the first draft of the budget. Uh, it's based on many, many estimates. Um, it, it doesn't take into account the action that we saw the state legislature take, uh, and the governor signing the budget. This was before that, so it doesn't take that into account. Our, our final draft will take that into account in October. Um, but this one sets us up to start the year, and we take this one to the annual meeting. Um, with just the change for actuals for this year in there, once we're done with that. Uh, I've met with the majority of the board members and answered questions. I had discussions about the budget and sent some of those uh answers that I had to look up uh out to the group as well. So uh, tonight, we were just looking to uh adopt the budget so that we can move forward. And then uh, in the budget cycle, the next piece is the annual meeting. Uh, and after that, then we find out in September how many students we actually have. Uh, and in October, we find out what our aid is from the state, and then we come back. We also know who we've hired, exactly what benefits they've chosen, all those kinds of things. Uh, and we redo this budget for all that actual information and bring it back uh for your approval. And then that's our, kind of our final budget for the year in most years, at the fourth Wednesday in October.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Millsor?
I don't know where it is. Well, I do. Um, Jim, I know you answered some of my questions, but I don't believe I understand what kind of equipment we're, we are buying for the new maintenance position. Could you? And what dollar value it is?
That would be um a heavy-duty pickup truck, with a dump box, a salt spreader, a snow plow, uh, some hand tools, a trailer. Uh, I think that would be about it.
And where are we storing this equipment?
Uh, depending on the season, some of it will be at the high school, some of it will be here.
We don't have such equipment at this time, correct? This is brand-new. We don't have a truck and a plow or anything of that nature.
We do. We have one. Mm-hmm. Yeah. We have one. This would be a second one.
Are we um offsetting any purchase services by taking on this additional position and the equipment?
Uh, probably in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range per year.
What services did, did we typically contract for that your, did we hire some people to plow?
Uh, we did. We hired companies to plow, so probably take over two more school locations for plowing. Uh, and then we hired uh summer help for doing some of the work that this will do.
So what does the position do during the, it sounds like it's addressing snow plowing, so that only happens certain time of the year?
Snow plowing and grounds maintenance, so they will be uh, uh, the, cutting the weeds, cutting the grass, working on trees, bushes, um lining athletic fields, uh getting things ready for teams, as well as the snow plowing and shoveling and those kinds of things in the, in the winter.
One thing I noticed in this budget and in speaking with you is that there's definitely a value placed on maintaining the um infrastructure and the grounds that we have. And I, you know, I'm still learning, but they're definitely, you know, I mean, there's a significant amount of money that we spend on custodial services. Um, yeah, and I think, I think that's a good thing, but that's something to keep, to, to keep an eye on, is we have a very high priority placed on maintenance of our buildings and grounds. I'm just stating that. I'm not saying it's for better or worse, but I will say that anecdotally, at Southwood Glen, we planted our little community garden, and the, the tricky thing is there haven't been any, like, staff members available to help to sort of clear it out in the fall, or even to sort of pull the weeds in front in this, in the spring. So there, there are um sort of day-to-day maintenance issues that, that are currently falling in the hands of volunteers, which, you know, to an extent is as it should be, but.
That's true. I've also noticed that some of the uh new grounds around the high school, new addition also, it's like, you know, could I pull that weed, or should I pull that weed, or?
You should always pull the weed.
No, I'm authorized, so uh.
Everybody's authorized to pull a weed.
Can we pull a weed? Okay. Jim, I'll send it to you to make sure you can.
Make a deal of it.
Um, also, this budget does, this budget increases the Community and Rec Department, the levy by over a hundred thousand dollars, twenty-eight percent, I believe, twenty-three point five percent, a hundred forty-seven thousand in one year. And I, I would now support, support that. So can I make a motion to remove that at this point?
Uh, you could make a, a motion to uh amend the budget to not have that, or you could, you could vote against it.
Why do you, um, so what are the reasons for um that increase? I thought it was because we didn't have any income from fees this year, because people weren't participating in rec programs.
Right. We were behind this year on our fee collection, and uh, we're kind of assuming that for next year, not everybody's going to feel comfortable of jumping right back in, uh, and that some of those programs uh just won't have enough revenue. They, they may have enough revenue, well, they may have people interested, and maybe it would run, but it isn't going to pay for itself like it would have in the past. Uh, so that's why we, we put that in there as a, a one-year stopgap on this. Normally, that program is fine with the amount that they've had in the past. Uh, but this, this year, we thought we better put it in there to see where we're at.
Because the only two sources of income for the Community Ed and Rec Fund, if I'm, if my table is correct, are the fees paid by um participants and then the levy. Is that correct?
Right.
So we have no other place to go to keep those programs going?
We do, we do, we do.
Where is that?
We have a fund balance, right? Jim, this is a separate fund. And what is the size of the fund balance, of this fund?
Uh, let's see.
I think it's right here on our page.
Uh, about a million dollars.
A million dollars. So we don't have to raise everybody's taxes to get through one year of down revenue. The fund balance can accommodate that, and we can save our taxpayers a one-year bump in levy for, for costs that should be supported by program fees. That's the policy. Program fees should support these costs. If they're not there, then the program should adjust. That is what my basis for not approving a twenty-three percent increase in tax levy in one year. You know, we, we can get by.
For, for that line item.
Correct. Yes. We can save taxpayers that increase.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred forty-seven thousand.
Total.
Correct.
Right. In total, taxes are still projected to go down over six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so having, having that backup to make sure that our program uh makes it and is able to provide these things that the people want, at the same time, you look at taking that away next year when all of this is behind us.
Or we can let fund balance handle it and consider adding it next year. Although, our scenario is that they won't need it next year. That's what you just told me. They likely will not need it next year. Let's just, again, why raise levy? We don't have to. The fund balance can accommodate that, one-year blip, and we will know then what, where we're at. So I would ask the board not to approve the hundred forty-seven thousand dollar increase in levy for Community Ed. It's a twenty-three point five percent increase in one year.
What would be the effect of taking that from your, so what is the downside of what Linda's proposing?
Uh, the, the downside is that if we, if we end up running behind, it would come out of fund balance. And uh, the Rec Department uses its fund balance for making our facilities better, the facilities that they use in particular. So that money would go into uh our facilities to enhance uh the experience that people have when they take part in rec programs. Uh, that's what the fund balance has done for us in the past. So we, we would not have, we would not have that.
Do you have any plans for that fund, or do you know if the Rec Department has any plans for that fund balance at this time?
Uh, specifically, long-term, they're looking at a rec building.
That's long-term.
Would take care, well, three years, four years. Um, with the, with the money they have, where they could run programs during the day, because they've lost all of their space inside the buildings because we're full and they're using all the classrooms. So our senior citizens uh lost their programs during the day. People who don't work during the day, they lost their programs. They'd like to have a small building where they could run those things during the day, and it's just really their programs. They don't get kicked out of that facility in the future.
I don't believe this board has discussed that building at all at a board meeting, so that's still an idea?
I would disagree with that. Being the senior board member, not by age, but being the senior board member on this board, we, the Rec Department has been looking forward to building their own facility almost since, I would say, my first year here. So we have discussed that. We have discussed that.
Has anybody else heard of that?
We have discussed that happening.
Has anybody else heard of that?
Brad Anderson has been here on numerous occasions and has alluded to that, that at some point, Rec Department's goal was to build their own facility.
They don't have this board approval of that.
But that has been their goal. That has been a long-term goal. It's not something new for today.
We started accumulating fund balance for that. I mean, the city's supposed to be doing rec programs. I, I understand we have.
Runs the, the.
Not in the city. In the city, the, the school district runs the recreation department. And after doing some research into that, it's because the city was using our buildings and not treating them in a respectful manner.
And that was another reason why on, last year, on our Recreation Department Guide, we made sure that the school district symbol was on that guide, so our community members knew the school district ran the Rec Department, not the city, because the city does not run the Recreation Department.
Good. We can give it back to them. We can give it back to them.
It seems as if this is a, this is not, it, it seems that these are two separate issues. The issue of, the issue, we're not building a building this year.
No.
Um, and that's not what this budget is for. Um, that's not part of this budget. So the, the hundred and forty-seven thousand, I'm going to round it up and say a hundred and fifty thousand, is, is the issue, is the issue for now. I agree with Mrs. Wackowski in that I, I think it's, we do have a number of redundancies um in place for um, and increasing the um, in my opinion, like, increasing um the tax levy, uh, a hundred fifty thousand for that, for that program, um, doesn't make a lot of sense. I, I would second your motion for that, but, but I, um, but that's, that's a separate issue than, than talking about building a building for the Rec Department, which I think we need to take up at, at a different time.
To what extent does the Director of the Rec Department sort of prepare and present their own budget needs? Like, to what extent does what we see as a line item in our budget reflect what they actually need to run their operations?
Uh, I work with that manager of the program directly uh to go through what it is they're looking at doing uh as they, they file their budget with me.
Okay. So if we were to go back to them and say, your budget is a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
It's not less. It's not less. Yeah. He keeps the same staff. He keeps the same expenditures. He's just got to manage the revenue side.
Yeah. They would, they would look at uh whatever would happen at the end of the year. That would come out of fund balance instead of making this change. I mean, we can look at, the other way to look at it is how, how are they doing when they start the year, like, for those fall programs is another way to look at it. Are they, are people coming, coming back? Are they doing just fine? Um, then we may not even see this in the second or the last draft of the budget.
That was, I mean, my question is, does it have to be decided right now, tonight? Or could we see what, what enrollment looks like in the fall to get an idea of if people are coming back to the programs?
We could definitely look at that for the fall, and, and, and what we're approving now, like I said, is based on all kinds of estimates. So I, I believe we'll still have a tax reduction, probably a larger tax reduction than we're looking at here, um, but a lot of the pieces will change within this. But if we wanted to see how they were doing in the fall and decide for the fall budget, we could do that.
Or we could take it out now and put it back in if they need it. Same difference, except that I, I think we should say we're not putting it in. It's not a gimme. That hundred forty-seven thousand increase. I, I would make a motion that we remove the hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. I'll make a one forty-seven because I have the number right there, from the uh Community Ed program.
Linda, it's not good enough to have it come out in October?
I think that we got to do it now.
Why?
Because it shouldn't be in there.
But what we're approving today, if we leave it in there or take it out, what we do in October, we, we could reverse that. Let's, let's say we take it out today, and we, we go along with what you're saying, and then come October, we go, well, this isn't working out well at all. We should put that hundred forty-seven back in there. That's what, we can do it.
I guess, I don't know.
Well, it's six of one, half of the other. President's break. We need a second before we discuss this.
I'm sorry.
So we have the motion by Mrs. Wackowski to remove the hundred and forty-seven thousand.
I'll second it.
Okay. And the second is by Dr. Bear.
I guess we move, we move it now. The only, um, we expect it to come back, right? And even if it doesn't come back, they have fund balance. We're not impacting their expenditure authority at all. We're just saying the taxpayers are not going to fund the Community Rec Program to, to make up for program fees. That's what we're saying. They're, they're going to still run their programs. It's just going to be the fund balance.
Actually, Linda, when you phrase it that way, it actually sounds, I don't, it, it doesn't sound as, as good to me. We, we are not going to fund Community Ed and Rec if they can't support themselves with program fees. I, I think we have some, even though the majority of our work is on behalf of the students and the young people of Franklin, we have to keep in mind that we do have a responsibility to make sure these programs are available for the people who use them.
We are.
The programs are still going to be available to the people.
I'm not saying we, we're going to cut.
And if, and if we need to put that money back in, I, I think we can vote on that.
I think as long as we go into this saying that we are, we are certain that we are going to allow Community Ed to, to, to run and offer the program.
They have authority to run. Yeah. There's no impact to their authority to run.
I think, you know, the important point of the Recreation Department is whether the city manages it or the school district manages it. Because it's a community, you can say, organization, the community, just like public schools, is being paid by the community. So we have to acknowledge, just like public education is funded, funded by the community, and the community also prefers to have certain amenities either provided by the city itself or the board, like swimming or whatever, the music, whatever they have. And they have a very good program, by the way. You know, I have used some of them. It's a very good program. Since the board has come in our court that we have been managing, and I'm completely in proponent that we must manage it, because if it's our buildings, and if someone is not maintaining it sufficiently, then because it's our building, we must ensure, and it's our tax levy, which the residents see, it is our responsibility that we must ensure that the properties are maintained. it is our responsibility that we must ensure that the properties are maintained. So again, since the board is in our court, now it's up to decide how do we ensure that this community organization, which provides services not only to the students, but also to the elderly, also, you know, to non-residents because the students have to pay the fee and all that stuff, which is a very good service, I believe, we ensure that they're physically responsible. Of course, you must always keep checks and balances. There is no free rent check given to anyone. That's for sure. How do we ensure that? I think the conversation must come around, how do we ensure accountability of this organization and held them accountable for the money they are spending or they're receiving? It is not a free rent check anybody is receiving. That might be the discussion. It must not be a discussion about taking it out, putting it in. How do we, because it is like a kind of our child. And how do you ensure that this fund which they're receiving, that they are physically responsible, that they are able to ensure that they are running in a very, you know, financially, physically responsible? So I think that must be a discussion. I think, you know, taking out, this is, it's not about school district managing or city not managing. I think we must go away from there. The issue must be right now, how do we hold this organization physically responsible? And what can we do as a school district? And it must be very clearly mentioned to all the citizens of the city that the recreation department is being managed by the school district as a service. In addition to providing students' education, we also provide this service, which Debbie has mentioned. So I think, let's have the discussion around that rather than kind of, you know... So how do we ensure? I think, so I'd like to come to the point, how do we ensure that this organization runs efficiently, smoothly, and physically responsible? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we have a, we have a motion and a second.
I think...
I think we need to vote on it.
This is a budget question. This is a budget question. We're approving increasing the tax levy $147,000 for community rec in one year. They have not had an increase, or they rarely have an increase in levy because the program fees cover that. The school just, and I don't understand, there's nothing that's not going to change. What's going to happen is that it's possible they might be short on the revenue side, but that's okay. They have a million dollars that they're sitting on that can cover that year. That when I say we, they don't need it, I mean, I'm not changing the program. I'm just saying we don't need to increase levy to make the program continue as it is.
Because you can rely on the fund balance.
To get us through a transition year because of COVID. Our taxpayers don't need to pay more.
So the question, I think, which comes out is that, let's suppose that we take the money out and they fall short of the revenue. They go to the fund balance and use it. Because we always use the fund balance as a cushion to fall on to run the district, well, then we must have an informed decision that the citizens of the city will be okay in case that there is a shortage in this fund balance for any upcoming project. At that time, there must be a clear communication that we are doing this X, Y, and Z right now, not to increase the tax levy. We'll be using the fund balance. But in case this fund balance gets short because the enrollment went low and the revenue might be less, and then if project comes up, that the city will, or the school district will increase the tax levy for that reason. So I think there must be a clear communication because it's not, I think, if you're taking it out, also then we must have clear expectations and a thought process of how to plan about that.
Or the other thing that will happen is your fees will not be stable from year to year.
But we're not taking money out. We're keeping it the same as last year. We're not taking money away. It's the same budget as, it's the same amount.
The same levy they had last year.
It's the same, what, what this, what this...
Right.
What this motion is, is asking for is the same amount as last year.
Correct, correct.
That's fine. But if, if next year, for whatever reason, they do have to say, "Your A-World books class is going from $15 a quarter to $20 a quarter" because they've completely, I don't, I don't see it happening, but if they eat through their fund balance, you know, that, that fee stability, that, that, this is the conversation we come back to. And that's fine. I'm just saying, that's the, the trade-off. We may lose something in fee stability for people who are participating in these programs. It's not likely, given that significant fund balance, but that is what the outcome could be.
Do we need, do we need to have a voice vote on this, Mrs. Larson? Because it's a budget issue?
I can just make one comment. I, I would recommend that the board have the discussion about a rec building and what that could provide to the community sooner than later because that fund balance would be helped to provide that to the community. So, you know, we need to talk about that and determine if this is something that we want to plan for. And that's, you know, that was Mr. Anderson's intent all along, is just to make the program better for the community, no more than that, and have more opportunities for community members to engage in rec programs because our facilities are so booked with what our kids are doing. So I'm just saying that, that, that was his essential nest egg to provide that for this community. And we draw it down, it just takes that much longer if that's indeed what the board wants to do in terms of running this rec program. He comes every year and he provides information about the success that we have in our rec program, which is really good. And we have a lot of community members who appreciate that and support our schools as a result of participating in rec. So I am just saying that that discussion is a discussion, I think, to your point, Ms. Wackowski, that we all need to be, to be had at the board table and clear about, yes, we're going to set that direction or we're not. And then the fund balance strictly becomes that pool of money needed for projects.
When do we typically get our ed, that report?
I don't remember what month. I can look, and I can move it up earlier if that's the best...
Well, it would be nice to have that conversation sort of around the same time that we are discussing the future capital fund needs wishlist or goal list, however you want to phrase it. And my understanding was you were thinking about that in around December, January? So...
Okay.
The building is generally, the building and maintenance is generally the first meeting in January, if I recall. And it seems like Mr. Anderson is here around then as well, but I don't, I don't, I don't remember that.
I, I can move it wherever you'd like it, so.
I think we're kind of off, off topic here, talking about a building that's not on the table. It's never been in a plan.
No, but we're talking about, that was sort of the reason that that program built up a fund balance, whether spoken or unspoken. And to an extent, they do have responsibility for their own budget. So, you know, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Linda, but I, I guess I can't. I am a little.
I think we should.
But, but I do support, one of the aspects of Linda's proposal is that, I think if we, my stand is that we must ensure that it's a, running in an efficient manner, physically responsive manner. But at the same time, if we can use the fund balance, if they have to use, and if they fall short, how much they will fall short? 147? Maybe there'll be increase in revenue.
Exactly.
This one. So at this time, if that helps the residents not to have that extra 20, you know, tax levy, that's beneficial. And if it falls short, and I think that's the, again, it must be informed decision, which, and the citizens must be aware of that. This is the thing which we are doing. And if this comes to that, there might be increase, but it, it'll happen. It might not happen. So, you know, I think, you know, I definitely kind of, being more fiscally conservative, you know, which I am, I think there is a good point of Linda's statement that right now, let's kind of, you know, not put that extra 147, give them the regular amount. If they feel short, we can definitely look like, you know, that, anything rather than just giving them extra 147, hey, possibly, you know. So I think that's a very good point.
No, shockingly, by having a conversation, I have, you know, come around to your way of thinking. I do think that in, for future, when we're having this conversation next year, if we know this is why this fund balance is here, besides, other than keeping fees from being too erratic, perhaps we'll look at it in a different way. But for now, we don't have that information other than sort of suppositions, so.
All right, so can we have a vote, a voice vote on the, on the motion, please?
And the motion is to remove that $147,000 from the budget.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
You're voting to remove. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, to.
All right, just so everybody knows. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
The motion passes 7-0.
Any other questions for Mr. Milzer?
Yeah, I do just want to see in the future, as we sort of briefly touched on here, I would love to see some more anticipatory guidance, anticipatory guidance about what our plans are for our use of the capital improvement fund, sort of know what's coming down the pipe for that fund and sort of what our goals are in terms of identifying how much money we would like to move to that fund every year, just so we can sort of have some transparency about how we're doing in terms of reaching some clearly stated, identified goals and best practices, so.
I also want to say that, you know, we're talking about the budget, the content of the budget, and this is not, there is still room for improvement of the document, and I would hope we can have a discussion about that later and that the vote tonight has in no way says that we got a great document here and we're good to have hands off. Can we make that distinction clear?
Well, we're voting on the content.
Make that distinction from, for your perspective. I would want to know specifically what you want to see. Like, to an extent, I don't want to know every spending and how much we spent on light bulbs. I don't think that that degree of detail from a board level is either appropriate or would influence my ability to make an informed decision.
And that is not, and I want to make sure that we have, I don't want to have that discussion right now. I don't want to have the light bulb discussion. I never asked about light bulb.
When should we put the light bulb discussion on the agenda?
I think we can do that separately from this because it could be a long one.
I, I, I think that your point is, your point is taken, although I, I would, I would applaud Mr. Alexandrovich and Mr. Milzer on the work they did, and, and I think it is an approved document. And I, I think we, you know, that doesn't mean it's perfect, and I think we need to see incremental change going forward. But I also, the content, the content of the budget is, it looks very good in terms of, in terms of what, what we're saying to the taxpayers, and that's, there's going to be a decrease in the tax levy. And I think that's, you know, I think we need to continue to do that work. This, this year has been, this past year and a half has been very difficult for the private sector. And, you know, the public sector, we need to, we need to make sure that we know, that, that our constituents know that, that the budget is very important to us and, and holding the line on, holding the line on spending. And, and I, and I think that's, I think that's the most important thing with this budget. So thank you for the, for the work this year.
And I'm hoping, what, after going through the budget, I, it seems to me that when the final budget comes in, I think we will see less of the numbers, you know, because I think we are not going to spend that much because there's several things which kind of, when I met with Mr. Milzer, like mitigation protocols and all that stuff because it was higher last year as compared to upcoming year forecasted, you know. We are going to have the sales, so I personally believe that we are going to see better improvement in the numbers when the final budget comes in and with the better kind of, you know...
Well, and I think these numbers are conservative in terms of enrollment as well. So I think there's something to talk about in terms of, or something to go forward on and talk about. You know, there may be, seeing changes in August and when, when everybody votes on the budget and, and in October when it's finalized. But I, at any rate, I, I don't know if we have any more, any more discussion or...
So, Jim, this budget, the numbers in front of us right now do not include any voucher payments. Correct? Is that the right term?
No, they would, they would include the Milwaukee voucher program. They would not include the Wisconsin and Racine voucher program or the...
The other one.
SNSP, I can't remember what it is.
And what was the dollar value of that last year?
I think it was about 551 for the one program. The other one was a little less than 30, I think, 27, something like that.
And I believe you stated that that has a direct levy impact to us.
It does.
So this increase could be wiped, this increase would be wiped out, this decrease would be wiped out once you budget for that.
Well, this budget is based on very conservative numbers.
I'm just saying that one change, one change. Not asking you to consider 20 million changes, but if you were to budget that, same numbers last year, this increase, this reduction would be gone.
I would prefer to look at it in the terms of reality, and this is a conservative budget made that way so that when we get to the fall, it's better for taxpayers, not worse. So...
I appreciate that.
Without the state numbers, I would expect this to be even better and that we could have the same tax decrease even by adding that in. Now, the, I don't know why the state does that one differently than the others, but they've adopted a mechanism for adding, adding the cost of that program for all districts to the revenue limit that we get midway through October. And they, we really have no indication of what that will be up until that point. And when this program was $50,000 or $100,000, it wasn't such a big deal. It didn't swing things too much. But in, when I was doing the budget this year, I was going to put this in this year, but I couldn't find any data on what it was going to be. And I, I'm not sure any exists. And I was too pressed for time with the new budget format to do that. But next year, my plan is to include it, at least an estimate, maybe exactly what it was the year before, if it stays the same. So this $500,000 will be in there as a line item under, under the tax levy is where it comes out, so that we'll have something in there for the future. Because it's getting, it's getting too big to kind of let it ride and wait for them to spring it on us in October. In the past, that worked, but it's just getting too large.
I, I think I'd like to see it in the future as a, as the past year's number budgeted in for... I don't know that it's, you know, I don't, I mean, it, I don't think it increases 10% or 12% a year. I think it kind of jumps all over the place. But I think if, I think a safe estimate, a conservative estimate seems like the number from last year.
Right, we'll watch it over time and see if there's any pattern we can detect. Or if it always goes up, then we'll increase it as well. But that'll be in there next year.
Linda, did you have a larger concern related to that issue? Or were you just pointing out that it wasn't there?
Well, it changes the number. We're not, we weren't, we wouldn't be looking at a reduction. We'd be looking at the same, the same.
Okay.
So, and also, the state budget has been adopted, has been signed by the governor. Correct? It does, yes.
Yes.
And it, estimates are out. Franklin is getting how much more?
I don't have it off the top of my head. It's a lot more, though.
2 million? 1.9? I pulled the schedule, Jim. It's 1.9. I don't know, you know, it's on the schedule that anybody can pull off the state website, so.
Then that's fine.
So if we were to put that in here right now, our levy would go down 1.9 million. One change if we were to do that.
If we were to put that in there, it would go down an additional 1.9 million.
Okay, all right. But to your point, there's a lot of other factors that are going to be rolling forward when we see it again.
I think it's something to, I think that's something to talk about in August, is that...
I'm just setting a benchmark there of what we can expect to see. State is throwing at us $1.9 million. They're expecting to see a levy reduction. So at that point, I think, let's adopt it, I guess. Whatever we're doing tonight with this...
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2021-22 Budget Draft 1 with the revision that we just...
All right, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget draft one with the revision that, uh, we just, we just voted on, um, so I'm looking for that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm happy to approve this, uh, initial, initial draft budget. I think it reflects the values and the mission that we've outlined, um, as a board, and I'm happy to approve it.
I would echo what you're saying, Dr. Bear, and I'd also like to point out the fact that we did receive an email today from a community member thanking us for our good budgetary practices in the past and continuing with this budget that was presented.
Great, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, item C, twenty-one, twenty-two, policy review schedule, Dr. Khan and Dr. Miller.
So, I think all of us have, um, there are a few things, first of all, uh, about some of the policies, so by some understanding that there are policies which needs to be reviewed and a mandatory recommendation by the WSB, uh, and, uh, on the policies which are more than five years old are recommended, uh, that's highlighted in the green, um. If any board member wants to review or bring on to any other policy, we can do that by bringing in a motion and requesting, uh, that be added to the agenda as such. So, this does, so this means that although all these policies are recommended, but if any school board member has a preference or a specific policy which wants to be brought up, can be done as such. So, today, we are, uh, reviewing the policy, uh, forty oh two, which is the Employee Code of Conduct. We did change minor, uh, changes in that, which are mostly grammatical, uh, and, um, the policy was devised to include the expectation that.
Excuse me, though, aren't we on agenda item C, nine C, which is just a schedule, correct? We're not talking about the.
Do we have to approve yours, the schedule?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
It's just a schedule. I just would ask, when I look at the schedule, so the purple ones are not mandatory and they're less than ten years old, so is, Judy, does this mean that we've, everything on our books now is less than ten years old?
Yeah.
And what?
Yay.
Wow.
Yay.
What policies are, I, I'm sorry, uh, what are we going to be reviewing this year? Is there a way for me to interpret that from this?
Everything on the list.
Oh, all of these?
Yeah.
Phew.
Not all on the same day.
Okay, good.
Over the year.
Is school food, food service thirty-seven-ten the one where students, classroom snack policy lives? Because that's the only one I would ask that we add to the review cycle. I'm sorry, I don't remember the number of that one.
Um, I'd have to look to see if that's.
I don't know if it's food service or not. I'd have to look. Do you know the one I mean, though?
I think we can.
Yes, you've discussed it before. We, Dr. Miller and I may have anticipated that.
I think it's the wellness policy that you're.
I think you're right.
Is, um, and, um, and I, you know, you don't, you could do it by motion or you could do it by consensus, so if there's consensus among the board that you'd like that added, I would add that to the list.
Just seems to be a hot topic of concern.
No, I'll support Angie on that.
Okay, we'll, we'll add, we'll add wellness to the policy. Uh, it's fine, we'll add it to it. And then, um, any, any operational policies that come up along the way to get added, but, um, yeah.
Although I think there was, I mean, some are non-mandatory, and I think at some point we're trying to probably get closer to the mandatory ones, but you'll do that when you review these, right? So, we don't need all these, this could still get smaller.
The list could get smaller.
Get smaller, which is not a bad thing, because we have to be able to at least get our head around every policy we have out there.
But if you, if you look at what we have on this list, um, most of them you'll probably want to retain. We're kind of getting to that point, because we've been working hard on this for a number of years.
You know, you know how many we have off there?
Oh, how many we have? I think it's about a hundred policies. Lisa and I work on this pretty often. It's somewhere around there.
Oh, okay, that's not bad. It used to be.
In several categories, right? Instruction, students, personnel.
Did it really?
Oh, yeah. There's something for everything.
Kind of adds up a little bit, but the board's worked a lot on this, so I, I think we have a good list to start with. It's very flexible, but. Thank you, Dr. Khan.
Thank you. Uh, graduation update, Dr. Miller.
So, you have some data that was collected from the survey that we sent out after the graduation. Mr. Volo wants to come up to the table, because he's here tonight, too, to answer questions or talk through some of this work, um, that went into graduation. I also have more information about the costs that I'll provide to you. I think I have enough copies going this way. So, overall, if you look at the data, you'll see that the response was very positive to, to the graduation being held at the stadium, um, this year, and, um, given that response and the, the cost comparisons, along with, you know, my, my personal experience having been at the sports complex and some of the, um, limitations that are, exist there compared to having the event at the stadium. Personally, I would recommend that we continue to have the event at the stadium in the future, but this is a discussion that I'm willing to have with the board and hear what your thoughts are, and again, Mr. Volo is here to answer any questions. So, with that, um.
The survey you shared with us reflects the experience I had, um, personally, as well as every anecdotal comment I've heard from a family. People, um, had a good experience. They appreciated not having to worry whether there would be, be limited in the number of tickets they had, um, due to size limitations, as well as the fact that it would be held rain or shine.
I would, I would concur with that. That's exactly, that's exactly the anecdotal, uh, information I heard from families that were there.
The only other thing that I heard was just would, you know, if this was going to be an, an every year, like, tradition, would there be a way to, um, bring back the, having like the choir and the band participate, um, in the future, but otherwise, that was.
Is that possible?
Yeah, uh, I believe anything is possible, and in a typical year, that was something that schools that have been there have done, and, you know, like, we think about in-person elements, like the music, for example, there's no reason that's not possible or likely. And in this case, where we're like probably about two months or so prior to our graduation, you know, the different conditions that allowed for any events, right? Were very, very different, so to do what we did seemed far off in, you know, February or March even, or even April, for that matter. So, the music piece, though, there's no reason that wouldn't be possible. I mean, exactly how you stage it and everything else, I, I don't know if I know exactly what that looks like. All I can see is press examples from, you know, other schools, but like live music has been part of graduations there.
But before we get too into the details of the, uh, experience, I would, I brought, I wanted to bring this to the board level, because I think there is a, there's a policy element to this. You know, where should graduation be? I think Franklin High School graduation should be in Franklin. We value our community, so why would we take this important event somewhere else? Just like four hundred and twenty other districts around the state of Wisconsin, including our, all our suburb, suburban districts, except for Oak Creek, do it in their own spaces, in their own stadiums. I, I hear us thinking that, well, Oak Creek does it, that must make it okay. But what about the four hundred and twenty-one districts doing it in their own facilities? What are they thinking?
They, are, do they have better, uh, indoor space? I think our problem is we don't have a rain to let the space, Linda, I, I think that.
We have a sports complex in our, in our, uh, community that we've been using for twenty years since I've been here.
To be fair, the communities, the four hundred and twenty schools you're referring to, most use their indoor field houses and facilities that are air-conditioned and climate-controlled as well. I mean, in, that's Waukesha, Milwaukee.
Most of them have them outside in their stadiums and bring them in if necessary. I've looked through many websites to see what, what goes on.
And, um, a number of those districts vary in size, of course. They're not all the same size as we are. So, there's difference, many, many, many small school districts in this state, many small school districts in this state.
I guess.
Can accommodate that.
What is lost by ha- what, in your mind, what is lost by having it, uh, out, outside of Franklin?
I can't think of really any justification for any district having it outside their community, except for a pandemic. I mean, we're taking to a baseball stadium that seats forty-five thousand, and we are bringing three thousand people there. It seems a little bit over the top. The satisfaction survey that you provide is, that's not definitive data. Parents were expecting a virtual event, and they were happy it wasn't person. In person is important, not the stadium. You didn't ask them if they prefer the stadium or location in Franklin. You never asked that question. Before we make the stadium our new normal, let's think about what we want Franklin's graduation to be. I would offer, number one, it should be in Franklin. It should be in person, not on a big screen, not looking through a, a screen at all, and it should be most, under our control. Our schedule, our ceremony, our band playing and our choir singing. It should be, we're giving up a lot by not keeping it in our community. It should be in our community. I mean, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars to go to.
Well, that sounds like.
American Family Field.
It's twenty-four thousand.
You're asking parents to pay for the, the other amount, but we're committing as a district twenty-seven thousand dollars to go to the stadium.
Yes.
But I think, you know, the differences, if you look at nineteen to twenty-one, although if we do in Franklin itself, so the actual diff- cost of difference is seventeen thousand, because it was ten thousand six hundred and fifty-seven for two thousand nineteen, and it was twenty-seven kind of, you know, uh, thousand if you.
There was no band there, there was, it was not, you're not comparing apples and apples in these final numbers here, and you're asking your parents to pay. Where's our equity consideration? Why do we need to be at the stadium? It should be in Franklin.
So, I think the question comes down to is that, is it worth it to spend extra? I'm just looking at the upper part, because the lower part is going to remain the same, second part, you know? The upper part, is it worth it to spend extra seventeen thousand dollars? Because compared to two, nineteen to twenty-one, is it worth it? It's seventeen thousand dollars, it's not a small amount of money for sure. You know, seventeen thousand dollars is seventy thousand dollars.
And the first question is, shouldn't it be in Franklin? It's our community, our high school.
So, there's two topics on the, uh, that we're sort of dancing around. One is dollar amount. I don't think you can just look at the seventeen thousand, because the additional, um, fifty-seven hundred of staff time to actually run the event is an expense of holding it at the, um, what, uh, I'm blanking on the word, the sports complex. So, it's a difference of about ten, tw- ten to twelve thousand dollars, so that is accurate. So, one of the conver- one of the points is money. Is it worth the money? And then the other is sort of a philosophical question of where should graduation be held, right?
Right, that's the first question.
So, which one do you want to talk about first? You're talking about all of them right now.
The first question is where should it be?
Just on principle.
Yeah.
Okay, in the best of all possible worlds, it should be at the high school. We do not live in the best of all possible worlds, because we can't move people inside. We would have to have the sports complex on retainer, right?
What do other districts do?
They move it inside their gym if it starts to rain.
Okay, so we can have it in.
If everybody brought half a person.
Okay, so, you're right. Maybe we can't have it in Franklin High School, but then there's a sports complex.
Absolutely. So, is there the same level of pride in the county-owned sports complex as our high school?
It's in Franklin.
Oh, I, I find it depressing.
I disagree with that, because I think, I, I definitely have a pride in the Franklin High School as compared to the, uh, county sport complex, because high school, I will have a pride for that. Sport complex, it's going to be one, I will not have a pride for that.
How many people total attended? Do we know how many total people attended it, uh, at the, at Miller Park, or American Family Field this year? And how, like, what is the capacity of the sports complex?
I didn't get the exact ticket count from the Brewers. That's one thing they didn't get back to me on yet, um, because they did scan tickets when they come in, so it was a little bit under three thousand, I believe.
And what's our limit of total number of people at the sports complex?
Typically, a little bit over three thousand, so we don't run into an issue where we have to ticket.
The, the seating is quite different at the sports complex than it is at the stadium. You know, they're essentially sitting on bleachers, the families. It's not air-conditioned, and parking is atrocious there. It's terrible. There's not enough parking.
The only reason I'm aware of graduation happening in our community when it happens at the sports complex is because people are parking in my neighborhood, Hunter's Reserve, and walking through Framing Park to get to the sports complex. I don't care about it one way or another, except that people's grandmas are having to walk, uh, a quarter of a mile.
Grandma's got to walk at the stadium also. You couldn't drop her off at the door. The parking is not appreciably different, because one way into the stadium, one way out.
It is very different.
I disagree with that.
I de- I disagree too, because I think, you know, uh, sport complex, you know, because when you have to park so far away, because there's no sufficient parking, and we don't have a high school to accommodate in case of rain, such a big crowd of three thousand. So, I think before we consider this, uh, the philosophical aspect of that is, yes, I will be more proud to have the graduation ceremony at the high school, but in reality, do we have the capacity? No. So, let's move on, that's what I'll say. The second point is that it's twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars, that's a financial aspect. We can definitely discuss about that, but.
The actual difference is three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's how, that is the difference between
This time.
At the sports complex and holding it at the stadium. So, i- i- if you sold fewer tickets, which I, I don't know if you would, because I'm sure people didn't attend because of COVID, it would be a bigger difference. I would assume the next graduation, perhaps even more people would attend, and that three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one would be even smaller. We would have the option instead of charging six dollars, charging seven dollars a ticket. I don't know if there was a lot of pushback on the price of the tickets or concern. I know Pete, some people bought twenty of them, so, um.
Did, was, were each, was each graduating student afforded a certain number of tickets gratis?
Correct.
Ready.
And I would say the other thing to always keep in mind is the foundation has a Student in Need Fund that should always be available if parents are ever having difficulty paying for tickets for graduation. That's what it's there for, so add that to the steno, Mr. Volo, please.
I would, um, also add that some of the pieces in terms of, you know, comparisons, and again, I was, you know, on the stage, obviously, for ceremonies in both cases, um, but the feedback of parents and families who've had both and have seen both was overwhelmingly positive. The view from the sports complex is not pleasant. Um, the conditions of sports complex, you know, like, I, I will just mention that we were able to stream graduation for the first time at Franklin High School, um, so a family member who couldn't travel, no matter the pandemic, that's something that in my prior, we did ten years ago. It's something we should do every year, um, to allow people who can't travel to see it from wherever they are. We can't do that sports complex. We can't, like, cannot be streamed, so.
Why is that? We can stream football games and every other sporting event.
Because it's our internet. It's our IT, it's our facility, so unless you can get the county to upgrade the sports complex and everything that goes with it, and there'd be a cost involved with that.
I mean, when we, when we were running vaccine clinic in the sports complex, we couldn't even have computer data entry in the main center building. You had to plug it into the wall in the back room.
Whereas our facilities, we can stream whatever we want, because we have the IT infrastructure that, you know, we, we've done a great job maintaining and building.
So, yeah, the point of pride of graduating at the high school, I can understand. That would be great.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
If we could do that, and if we had, you know, a field house that could be, okay, we're going to have it outside if it's not raining, and if it's raining, we can easily shift things inside, probably not easily, but we could relatively easily shift things inside. But even, you know, the Sabre Center isn't large enough, the gym isn't large enough, we know we can't.
What about the, the, our super-duper gym over here?
It's not large enough either, and the parking's certainly not enough.
So, then, like Maxud was saying, then, okay, if we're not going to have it at the high school, then point of pride, the county's complex, there's nothing special about that. Being able to say that you, I mean, for the kids to say they walked on, you know, the field and whatever else, that was something I heard from graduations in years, like, it was amazing to be on the field and have your, you know, your picture on the Jumbotron and that kind of stuff like that. That becomes a point of pride, and people, you know, so many people who were able to watch either, you know, livestreamed or were able to attend because there were plenty of tickets, I think it, you know, if it, if it comes down to the field, I always want to call it Miller Park, American Family Field.
Just call it that, Ann.
Versus, versus the sports complex, I just, I don't even think that there's really a discussion, uh, at that point, if, if, if those are the two choices. On air-condition versus, I mean, not that Miller Park.
Miller Park's not air-conditioned.
It's not air-conditioned, but it's certainly.
It was, it was pretty nice. I can tell you that.
Even the first fifteen minutes when the sun was on our faces.
The complex is humid, and for some reason, maybe because this Miller, uh, Miller Park was, was, was so big, and it was definitely nice, I can tell you that. I, I, it was.
There's been nice days, you know, weather was great on that day. And weather can make a difference at the sports complex in the same way.
The sports complex is all built up, the body heat, you cannot get rid of it if there's not a strong breeze. The sports complex was a miserable place.
We have had good weather the last few years at sports complex.
And I know you're philosophically opposed to having it outside, and you get frustrated that people enjoy seeing themselves on the Jumbotron, but
I do.
That's the reality of our, our youth right now, and it's
We're to settle for that?
Yeah, it's their graduation.
Yeah, yeah. We're celebrating them, and that's what's making them happy and their parents.
Yeah.
Who are, you know, proud to see them on the Jumbotron.
I know it's hard.
And it's smart.
I've been paying for it then. I get, I don't want to see an increased cost. I mean, think about this. What about legislators that see us doing this? Legislators drive by, oh, there's another graduation at Miller Park.
All right, so you have a three thousand dollar increase.
They don't need any money. They can go graduate at Miller's Ford.
If our tick, if ticket prices don't increase to cover, we have to allow for inflationary costs. This is not going to hold steady from year to year. It's just not. Okay? So let's, let's give it a 1.5% ability. If ticketing costs don't cover it, we'll go to the foundation and ask if they'll make up the difference.
I'm sure. I think we can find ways and means
Yes.
To find it. I think because it's a graduation of the students who really worked hard and the families, this is a moment, and this is a small price to pay as a district.
I agree.
Small price? Twenty-seven thousand dollars for one, for three hours?
Linda, three thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars is the actual price, not twenty-seven
The difference. Putting on a graduation cost money.
We're committed to twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty. That's what the district, you know. We're signing for twenty-seven thou, the tickets are variable.
Okay, so
The tickets aren't going to be zero, Linda.
Okay. I, I can vote no, you can vote yes, fine.
It isn't an action item?
It's not an action item.
I know.
We're not even voting.
It should be.
And I would just say, I have every confidence in our facilities that we have, you know, if we had the capacity to maintain and do anything. Because as, as you mentioned, we maintain things at a really high level. Our building ground staff does a fantastic job maintaining and keeping up what we have. I mean, like, like, our buildings are beautiful. You know, the Milwaukee Sports Complex, we don't really maintain any control over, you know, before that or after it, you know, and yet we have made it, you know, like, the best we can, but it's been a variable. You know, we didn't have floods the last couple of years we were there. We didn't have any ninety-degree days, so, you know, like, the last time we were there, we had a decent weather day, I think, you know, but, you know.
What kind of control do we have on the date?
So the date typically, well, so no matter when we have graduation, graduation will happen after the last day of school. That'll be like a norm. So in that regard, yes, there's a Major League Baseball schedule that would come out typically in August, in a non, you know, like, prior to last year. So this year, it should be out next month, I believe, is when we would know when the possible dates are. But if the last day of school this upcoming year is, I think, June tenth, does that sound right? Graduation would be after that, at the soonest. No matter where we have it.
I'm done. Thank you for your discussion. Appreciate that. Can we come back, though? I just say, can we see what happens next year? Let's just not just put in
Absolutely.
Let's not put on autopilot and just, you know, here we go. Let's bring back.
Linda, I have no doubt that you will not let us not bring it up next year.
And, and I would add to the, to refine an in-person ceremony and do something for a second time, you know, in terms of, you know, as somebody who spoke, you know, for better or worse, you know, like, all those things of getting our speakers comfortable, getting music there, like, there's a lot of things that we can do, you know, differently or better, and we do, right? We always improve. So I thought things this year, you know, is we got to see a wave and everything in between. You know, I couldn't imagine a better ceremony about eleven or twelve months ago looking ahead to this year. So I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the treasurer's report is available in Board Docs Library. Item ten, School Board Liaison Reports, Personnel and Policy, Policy four zero zero two, Employee Code of Conduct. Dr. Khan, please.
Yes, so, sorry, I already started the policy review.
Yeah, it's just a warm-up.
I'm so excited to review it. This is the policy for employee code of conduct, and of course, there's, there's some minor grammatical changes to include the expectation that employees avoid behaviors that may cause them to lose respect with other staff members. Also, the rules were revised to address both physical and emotional safety of the students. And the rules were also revised to provide more specific information regarding expectation regarding to student-staff relations, which is an important aspect of the policy, you know, which are the areas where they cannot cross the boundaries, including they cannot have their, share their person email addresses or person phone number, anything like that. Always have to be professional communication with the students. The, also replace the language to ensure clarity, and I think, and the last is to hold employees responsible for improving the skills and professional learning, which was one of the expectations. So I think the policy is there. So I'll request a motion to approve the revision of the policy forty-two oh two.
Quick question. To what extent? Oh, sure. Yep, sorry.
Run the rules.
Second, Matt, yeah?
Second.
All right.
All right, discussion, please.
Sorry about that. To what extent does this apply, if at all, to volunteer staff, like, volunteer coaching staff? Not at all. Do we have any code of conduct for people who interact with students in that capacity?
Yeah, we have a volunteer policy.
Perfect, okay.
That's a different policy.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
One of the hundred and
Thirteen. Lisa said one hundred and thirteen. I believe her.
Can, can I bring up some things that I don't like in the administration? Please, rules.
Can you give us a paragraph number?
Let's go with the very first line, which is, the following administrative rules are, and are not school board policy. Administrative rules are subject to change without board approval. And the very first line says, the Board of Education expects. If these can be changed without board approval, then the Board of Education does not expect employees to follow that conduct. That should say, the expectations of employees are, but don't, don't put it on the board if the board has no, say, in the administrative rules being changed.
That's where you spoke.
Then, where did I see that? Down in the green area, professional relationships with students. There's a reference to emotional safety. Can I get a definition of emotional safety? Or, or description of what that means?
So if, if there was any kind of bullying going on, that would impact someone's well-being, that would be, you know, an example of protecting someone's emotional safety to prevent that from happening.
So if, okay, well, in here, it says, where does it say that again? Somewhere in here I stumbled across, oh, in that first paragraph, one, two, three, four, five lines down towards the end, it says, however, all staff are expected to ensure students are safe physically and emotionally at school. Ensure means to make certain. That's one hundred percent, everyone will be safe physically and emotionally. So the clumsy kid that I am, I stumble and break my arm, who gets fired because you did not make certain I was physically safe? I mean, it, it, the wording is just not right. Emotional safety, somebody says, oh, you wore two different socks today, and the person breaks down and cries. You're not being a bully, you made an observation, but you just made somebody not emotionally safe. But, and here, here you're saying ensure, which means make certain.
I think, but we have to, I expect it to, because policies are the expectations.
Right, but say, the expectations are that all students will be physically and emotionally safe.
So I think, you know, I see that appropriately because all staff are expected to ensure students are safe. That's why it's supposed to, you can't say all staff will make students safe. They are expected. Expectation is a different understanding as compared to making them. No one can guarantee the hundred percent square, quote-unquote, safety of anyone.
Anyone.
I can be walking out of, fall in the parking lot, yeah.
Take out the word ensure.
What word would you use instead?
I, is the school district ensuring to, expecting and taking precaution to make me safe, that's expectation of the school district, and that's the policy, expectation of policy. So I think expectation is a different thing. So I think you have to emphasize here on the word expectation more than ensure.
Well, and also you can say, you know, like, at least the way I would interpret it, is that staff are expected to a hundred percent do everything that that person as a staff member can to ensure that kids are physically and emotionally safe. No one ever could make sure that every person on the face of the earth is always physically and emotionally safe, because that's not, but this is ensuring that they are giving, like, staff members giving a hundred percent of their energy to make sure that these expectations are met. That, certainly there might be gaps sometime.
And if you think of it this way, too, which is negative, this, this conveys to employ their job responsibilities, and they can never look away from a student who might be in a situation where they would be harmed physically or emotionally. They can never look away. It is their job to do something. And that's what I think this statement says, is it is their job to make sure that they, children, children are safe physically and emotionally in school. It is their job.
Yeah, it doesn't say to ensure that no harm befalls any student ever. You know, that would be more what you're getting at.
Well, that's kind of what it says. All staff are expected to ensure, make certain students are safe physically and emotionally at school.
I, I think it reads differently. I'm okay with the language.
What, what would, what would you have it say? That sentence? I don't like the word ensure.
Yeah, you need to suggest a different word.
Yeah, different word.
Try really hard to? I mean, that sounds lame, so.
Okay.
Expect you to try hard.
See, it's the kind of thing, like, this is the gold standard, and
I think our staff are expected to ensure that they, as a staff member, are doing everything they can.
Yeah.
I can't, I can do everything I can to make sure that you don't fall in the parking lot, but at some point, there's a limit to what I personally can do to make sure you don't fall in the parking lot. But as long as I have done everything that I can do, I have ensured that, that you are safe in the parking lot. So I mean
And if you fall in the parking lot, you'll do the next best thing.
Right, but I think what we're asking our staff is that they are always giving a hundred percent to make sure that they, as a single staff member, are doing whatever they can do to make sure that students are safe.
I don't think you want to water down this language.
The physical safety thing, I can kind of understand because you can, you could set physical safety. You're not breaking an arm or, or anything like that. Emotional safety?
Emotional safety certainly is, is, you know
It's different for everybody.
It's maybe a, a little bit different, but it's the same, the same concept. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that you feel safe emotionally. That means if I see some kid bullying you in the hallway, I'm not going to walk on by and be like, oh, you're not in my class. No, you are a student of Franklin Public Schools, and I am going to do what I can to make sure that you are safe.
The example that, for emotional safety, that always comes to my mind, or came to my mind when I was reading this, is when Trump was running for president, and there was at a university, they were putting up signs, "Vote Trump." And some people were so emotionally distraught about this that they had to take all those signs down. Now, their level of emotional stability is substantially different from a lot of other people. And that's where the term snowflake came from, because it melted under a very low degree of heat.
Well, the tricky thing is with children, we have to be a little more understanding of what their level of emotional stability is, right? We may not, we may say, we may
It's really different, really, for every kid.
Yeah, it is. It really is.
Yeah, I think that, that one is so tough.
That's not a problem. That's a reality.
But in our school district, we must ensure that each and every kid has emotional safety and a place to feel emotionally safe, irrespective of, once they step in, the bus actually, by law, they must feel emotionally safe, period. And I think that's the statement which must stand by, because that's our virtues and values of, as a district.
Oh, you absolutely want the kids to feel safe.
Yeah. They, because you know, with the, irrespective of their color, race, religion, background, financial background, whatever it is, they, because that's, we, we are proud of that, we provide them a safe emotional environment where they can succeed. It's very important to provide that environment and that language, I think. And we're just setting a language for the employees so that they know that, okay, you know, this I'm going to stand by.
Okay. I was making a point. I was proved wrong again.
No, you have always a good point out. Thank you for bringing that up.
You are correct. I think the wording at the very first, there's like an extra and or are or whatever, following are
Yeah, and your other point, we, we took your other point, Alan.
Maybe not.
Alan, do you feel emotionally safe right now? I'm just asking. Oh, well.
Did you have any other?
No, there's much trouble as I can cause. So what did we change the wording to in the Board of Education expect? What did we change the wording to?
I, I will craft it, but I'm just taking up Board of Education.
Yeah.
Because it's the rules, I'll make sure it's what it needs to be. Technically, you're not voting on the rules, you're voting on the policy language.
Which is very brief.
All right, I think we had a motion and it was seconded, correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any Board Liaison Reports?
Yes, I, I did attend the SWSA meeting this Tuesday.
Yes, thank you for sending out those notes.
I sent some notes, so I think there's some helpful things on the, what we're doing going back to school. And there's also a fabulously new data tool that the Policy Forum has provided, so Jimmy should take a look. It's pretty fabulous. Have you seen it?
I've used it before.
Okay, good. Okay. That's all. Thank you. And the budget was adopted, and there's more stuff happening.
You mean for the state?
For the state, yes.
Thank you.
More stuff coming down, some other tough issues, so.
Anybody else? Board Liaison Reports, you know, it's summer. I know we all went to the parade, or some of us went to the parade. We ran out of candy, so
At the bend.
That's a parade foul.
A big, a big note, double up candy for next year, please.
Definitely.
Were you throwing too much?
No, no.
And it was very
No, I think Clearly I was because we ran out.
We were conservative. We were very conservative.
I thought we were conservative as well.
Very good show. And actually, I have emailed all you guys the pictures. It was a great event. I just, I just emailed you.
Oh, you did, okay.
It was a great event, and I think the, the community throughout the parade really appreciated us as the board, because I was very vocal, Franklin School Board, Happy Fourth, you know. I kept reiterating it.
It was nice to talk to
It was a very nice event.
Yes.
Good job.
Happy to see people out there.
It was nice to talk to Senator Bradley and Representative Skronski and Representative Stile beforehand.
Congressman Stile, yeah.
That's good.
It was a great parade, I thought.
And me and Linda also
Except we ran out of candy.
Give that, give away the ice cream.
Yeah, we also did some ice cream work, so.
A good time was had by all.
Yes, I guess that's, I guess that's a school and community engagement report. So maybe I skipped ahead. Does anybody else have any community engagement reports?
I have one kind of, like, I don't know. I just wanted to share that, sitting at O'Hare Airport about two weeks ago at five o'clock in the morning with my family, a gentleman called out to my daughter, who was wearing her swim and dive sweatshirt, and was like, is that a Sabre? Is that Franklin Sabres? Like Franklin, Wisconsin? And my daughter, who was, you know, somewhat asleep at the time, was like, yeah, I graduated from there fifty years ago. Franklin Public Schools, that was the best decision of my life, and I am still proud of Franklin fifty years later. And it was just, it was really, it was very cool to have that experience, you know, in Chicago and just random gentlemen sitting at the gate who happened, you know, to also be traveling, who recognized that Sabre logo and the Franklin.
That's good branding.
Five in the morning.
It was very good branding. But it was also, it was just kind of neat to have that. And she would, you know, she said, oh, yeah, you know, I'll graduate next year. And, you know, they had a little conversation about that. So it was, it was just kind of a neat community moment, even though it didn't happen in the community.
He gave his name?
I did not give his name.
Okay.
His daughter, or the person who was traveling with him, was definitely rolling her eyes, like, oh, there he goes again. And then, then it was boarding, and then, you know, we got, we got separated, but
See, great community events can happen outside the community. We can have graduation at O'Hare. Aye, 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 okay.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. All right, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, 1C, to discuss employee performance concerns.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Do we need a?
Yes, roll call.
Roll call, please?
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Thank you.
Do we want two minutes?
There's no bathroom.
All right. Item 12, School Board Meeting Debriefing, School Board Member Comments.
I think we had great discussion tonight, we got to hear a lot of viewpoints and a lot of ideas, so I think that's great. And I really appreciate when that happens.
I do, too, thank you for listening to me, I guess.
Absolutely, Linda.
No, I really appreciate Linda, you've been a very kind of, you know, having a thought-provoking discussion, so thank you. And thank you, all of the board members, including our S team.
All right, item 13, Future Agenda Items. Coherence Plan Update will be at next month's meeting, which is, I'm sorry, I forget the date.
Twenty-fifth.
August 25th, thank you. And Summer School Report will be the same?
Yes.
Down with summer school?
Yes.
All right, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:51.